I'm going to call this meeting of the mayor and Board of Commissioners for September the 13th to order. Would you rise with me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you bow your heads with me for a brief prayer?
Father God, I come to you tonight on behalf of the town of Rising Sun. I pray that you watch over our citizens, our elected body, those that put on the uniform of our fire, police, and emergency medical services, those serving overseas in our armed forces, and those that are here tonight. I ask that in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. We do not have approval of any town meeting minutes or executive sessions, so we're going to roll right into public presentations. Mr. Gallow, do you have that for me?
Roll call.
Oh, sorry. Roll call.
Commissioner LaShiere.
Here.
Mayor Marion.
Here.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Commissioner Shepard.
Here.
Commissioner Arthur Reath. Let the record reflect that Commissioner Arthur Reath is absent. All other elected officials are in attendance.
Thank you. Town Attorney?
Yes, Mayor, we have two items that are related. The first two, A and B, Ordinance 2016-06 and 2016-07, they're related, and I explained them at your last meeting when they were introduced. I'll give you a brief explanation for those who need a refresher. The first item is called a "band," a bond anticipation note, and the second item is a "bond," what you normally hear as a municipal bond. Both of these are setting a threshold so that you can borrow money. This is how the town borrows money. You can't give mortgages and promissory notes like that. You issue bands and bonds. You're borrowing this money not to exceed $12 million, and this is for your water line extension project with the Chester Water Association. The project isn't costing $12 million, but this is the par limit on the bonds. The way these things work are there in tandem. The band is an anticipation note, meaning this is your construction loan, if you will. You get this promise from a bank to give you interim financing, financing while the project is going on, just like if you were building a house. That was the example I used last month. And when the house is complete, the interim financing or construction loan goes away, and at the end of that, then the bond takes over, and that's your long-term financing. Your long-term financing in this situation is going to be with the United States Department of Agriculture, and they're going to give you a 40-year mortgage, basically, a 40-year note at a low interest rate, and that's what the bond secures. So the band is temporary interim, and the bond is long-term. You pass them both at the same time, because obviously nobody's going to give you interim financing if you're not going to get long-term financing, and if you don't have long-term financing lined up, there's no point in moving ahead. You're going to take two votes on these, one on each ordinance, and you can discuss them separately or individually.
Thank you. All right. So we have consideration of adoption of Ordinance 2016-06. Do we need to read this into the record at all?
No, you don't need to read, other than the title and the ordinance number.
Perfect. Could I get a motion to accept Ordinance 2016-06, which is the band resolution?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. The next, the town attorney just spoke about how the band and bond resolutions go together, so can I get a motion to accept Ordinance 2016-07, which is the bond resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Commissioner LaShiere?
I want to go ahead and discuss Resolution 2016-14, a resolution titled Personnel Manual, Take Home Vehicles. A resolution outlining the policies for take-home vehicles. Can you bring that up on the screen?
I'm having it.
Okay. Basically, this is an update to our actual personnel manual. A lot of times, it's, you know, with a lot of different updates, ordinances, or things we're putting in place, it's, you might not necessarily have an issue now, but, you know, you could have an issue in the future, and a lot of it's being more strategic and looking ahead. The town, as everybody knows, has a slew of vehicles. We've got Public Works, we've got the police officers' vehicles, we've got the town administrators' vehicles. All these are owned by the town, and, you know, consequently owned and paid for by taxpayers. You know, this isn't a discussion about, like, the importance of take-home vehicles. I mean, that's a whole 'nother discussion. Everybody feels strongly about whether people should be able to take home vehicles or not. There's reasons, you know, for and against. For instance, like, you know, these days, you know, I'd feel really uncomfortable if all the police cars weren't take-home. You know, nobody, I don't think, would want to see all our police cars sitting in the parking lot to be vandalized, destroyed, and whatnot, everything that's going on with our police. The different changes or updates to the actual manual is, in Section 510A, a line was added to include random drug testing and other policies of the insurance carrier for the town of Rising Sun. And this is just basically get down in writing that there could be random drug testing when it comes to vehicles usage. Sections 510-E, employees may not use town vehicles for non-business purposes. What was added is not approved in advance by the Board of Commissioners. In Section F, in town, what was struck was, in general, town vehicles shall not be taken beyond town boundaries without the consent of the supervisor. I'm not sure if we actually even have any employees that live within town limits. I mean, we may have some, one. Everybody else lives outside of town. Of course, the town is roughly around a square mile, so it's, you know, it's hard to fit everybody in. What was added was, certain employees are considered essential employees and are expected to respond to emergency issues occurring within the town of Rising Sun and to actively participate in such emergency incidents on behalf of the town. These employees may be assigned to take-home vehicles. Employees assigned take-home vehicles shall be limited to travel to and from work of no more than a one-way, 25-mile radius of the town of Rising Sun. One of the things everybody knows we're doing is we're looking for an additional co-despector. You know, when the likelihood of finding a qualified candidate within the town limits of Rising Sun is very small, as it is finding any qualified candidate, it's not that there's not qualified candidates, but when you've got 900 homes, the pool's just not that big to go through. And, you know, for certain positions, you might have to pull from outside of the county. You know, we could have to hire somebody out of Anarundale County. When it comes to employees taking home vehicles, if it's, you know, they're deemed to actually take home a vehicle, you know, there shouldn't be excessive mileage on the vehicle. You know, there shouldn't be extra wear and tear, and nobody should have to pay for the gas or the convenience. You know, somebody lives 50, 60, 70 miles. I mean, personally, I live 66 miles from my work. You know, it's, that shouldn't be an actual burden on the taxpayer. Another line, Section N, was struck, is the operators of town vehicles are responsible for changing flat tires and returning the tire to the garage for repair. That was removed because you could potentially have an employee that has a take-home vehicle that has legitimate, you know, employment with the town, but might not physically be capable of actually changing a tire. You know, whether it could be somebody because of age or strength, they could have a disability, so you really can't force somebody that has something along those lines to actually everybody change those tires themselves. And that is the only updates to the employee manual, Mr. Mayor.
Do you want to put forward a motion, Commissioner LaShiere?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded for Resolution 2016-14.
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. Actually, I'm okay with three of the four changes, but I'm not actually good with Change F. Hey, Jay, I'm going to ask a, like, kind of legal procedural question here. Can I make a motion to pass it with the exception of Line F?
Since you have a motion and a second, so you have a live motion on the floor, your motion would be to amend the motion to strike Line F, if that's what you want to take out. And then, if you, you'll debate that, you'll need to get a second, you'll debate that amendment. If that amendment passes, then the regular motion would be on the floor with what is in front of you without F.
Okay. I make a motion to amend the previous motion to pass this with the exception of Line F. I would like to return Line F to the, to say, in general, town vehicles shall be taken beyond town boundaries without consent of the supervisor.
I'll make a second. I'll second that.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to amend the Resolution 2016-14, striking Line F, and keeping the rest of the manual. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
Nay.
All right. All right. Motion passes Resolution 2016-014, which is a strike of F. So I guess we'll put together another.
You still have a live motion, correct?
You still have a live motion, so now you're basically adopt, now the motion on the floor is to adopt Resolution 2016-14 as amended.
All right. Could I get a motion to adopt Resolution 2016-14 as amended?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion?
Yeah, we have a point to discuss. Can we discuss the rationale of striking Section F?
Do you want to go into what Section F is for the public so that they know?
Yes. Section F is, certain employees are considered essential employees, are expected to respond to emergency issues occurring within the town of Rising Sun, and to actively participate in such emergency incidents on behalf of the town. These employees may be assigned take-home vehicles. Employees assigned take-home vehicles should be limited to travel to and from work of no more than a one-way, 25-mile radius of the town of Rising Sun. So I just wanted to discuss exactly what was wrong with Section F.
Well, I can tell you, my first thought on this is that if we switch from the old language to the new language, nobody can take it more than 25 miles. You know what I mean? If we keep F the way that it was, with a general consent, there can be. I mean, and whatever, and the wording that's put in there, as long as there's a consent from the supervisor, you're basically telling the same thing, just with a mileage limit. That's, that's my view.
Any more discussion?
I guess to elaborate on that, is it your opinion that, on a regular basis, if you hire an employee, they should be allowed to drive more than 25 miles with a taxpayer-paid vehicle?
I can't say yes or no on that. That's a case-by-case basis for a new hire. But my thing is, is if you put it in this way, then that's striking any ability to drive more than 25 miles. You understand what I'm saying? Like, that's, that's, you're amending it to say you can't drive more than 25 miles one way, period, end of story, even with consent, because there's no, there's no way around that.
Right, for personal usage.
What do you mean, personal usage?
Well, I mean, as this reads, employees assigned take-home vehicles shall be limited to travel to and from work of no more than a one-way, 25-mile radius.
I understand that, but you're saying if somebody lives more than 25 miles away, if, you know, Chip needs one of them to take the car home for more than 25 miles one night, they can't even do that, because it's amended in here that they can't.
And we're keep, are we keeping?
Wasn't Section E, employees may not use town vehicles for non-business purposes, not approved in advance by the Board of Commissioners?
How is that not a business? That is, that is a business. What do you, what do you mean? That would be business if you're taking it home for the night, because you have, you know, yeah, you have something that you have to do for the town. That's, you know, that, that actually doesn't help it at all, because that's just saying if, if it's non-business, we can approve it for something else. But if it's for business, you're still saying that you can't drive it more than 25 miles. I mean, if we want to, if we just want to put it out and then discuss it further, that's fine, but I, I just don't.
Well, I think changes have to be made, because, like, in my opinion, if you have an employee that lives over 25 miles, they shouldn't be driving the town vehicle home, having the taxpayers pay for gas and maintenance, and devaluing the vehicle excessively. Now, of course, there's emergency circumstances or different things, but, you know, the question is, like, wording that, so it's just not the same person taking it home. Like, you know, just recently, we, you know, with two police vehicles down, we had one officer, which Officer Stickney's here, was taking the vehicle home, and, you know, the rest of the law enforcement officers were hot-seating two vehicles. You're saying that didn't happen?
Nobody's saying it didn't happen.
Well, I'm just saying.
What's that?
What's that?
Nothing.
I can't say I agree with, with all that.
Okay.
Okay. So are we moving forward with Resolution 2016-14 as amended, or are we tabling the amended resolution?
I'm good moving forward.
Okay.
I'm fine with moving forward.
All right. Resolution 2016-14 as amended, could I get a motion to approve the amended version?
I think we already have the motion.
We already have the motion.
Can I get all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Nobody opposed. Did you oppose?
No, I go through to keep the changes A, changes E, and the other changes.
Okay. Moving forward, Resolution 2016-15, Town Administrator, do you have that for me?
Yeah, give me one second. I have a little bit of a problem. I'll try from here. This is a resolution that was requested by our accountant, and what this is, is a resolution establishing a minimum threshold for the collection of personal property tax. And basically, businesses in the town of Rising Sun, similar to what they have to do in the county and the state, pay personal property tax on business equipment and so forth, and things like that. Right now, the town of Rising Sun collects that personal property tax regardless of what the assessed value comes, comes to the town at. So in essence, the town has some people that it sends a bill for .36, .75, .90, $1.20, and it really, it costs the town more money to go through the process of billing than what they're actually collecting in the assessment that they get from the state. So this is a resolution that basically would say, therefore be it further resolved that the town of Rising Sun will no longer process a bill for any personal property tax of businesses, utilities, or contract carriers operating in the corporate limits of the town of Rising Sun, if the valuation of said business operation, as certified to the town of Rising Sun by the Maryland State Department of Assessment, results in a tax due to the town of less than $5. So what this basically comes down to is businesses, when they fill out their quarterly taxes, they have to, they have to give evaluations of their equipment and the items that are covered by that law. The state then verifies that and sends that information to the town, saying that the ABC Company has $550 worth of assessed value on its equipment. That results in a tax doable to the town of roughly, you know, a little under, a little over $5. So the analogy would be, if somebody had business, assessed business equipment at $400, let's say, the tax that they would have to pay the town would be less than $5. It would cost the town more than that, or a sizable chunk of that, to process the bill and send it to them to get the $4. It might cost the town $3 or $4 to do that. So it just doesn't make sense to be collecting that. So that's what this resolution is doing, is setting a minimum threshold of $5 or less.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2016-15, which is a resolution establishing a minimum threshold for the collection of personal property tax?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Moving forward into business meeting items, Commissioner LaShiere?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to seek permission to appoint the current town engineer, KCI, as the, well, basically, KCI's been on all the preliminary work with the review of the water plan and where the water line's going, and I would like for us to appoint them to go ahead and do the construction design on the Maryland side of the line. That's the construction of the, the design of the actual line and all the surveys. The cost associated with that is $49,860.
Could I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Commissioner LaShiere. All right. Moving into citizens' input. Let me make sure I get it right this time. Mr. Cather?
Thank you. You did well. My name's William Cather. I live in Stevens Road in Rising Sun. The town of Rising Sun enacted Resolution 2016-07 on June 14th, 2016. The new service debt fee appeared on residential tax bills in July 2016. I and several other property owners subsequently questioned the validity of this new fee, as it pertained to unapproved properties lying within the incorporated town limits. Pardon me. During the August 9th town meeting, the mayor and commissioners indicated they were prepared to de-anex my property located on Stevens Road. I was led to believe the elected body would investigate the necessary course of action in order to achieve this. On August 29th, 2016, I emailed the mayor and commissioners separately a request for information on the status of my de-annexation request. I received neither response to my request nor an affirmation of receipt of my request. On September 6th, 2016, I sent the same request via United States Postal Service certified mail, which you signed. Thank you. I was not requesting a decision on the action, merely an update on the status of the investigation. I have not been given the courtesy of a reply to any of my requests. Why?
Mr. Cather, I think, Commissioner Warnock, do you have a reply?
I think the one thing that I would say is, we previously asked if you would be willing to speak in a non-public forum, and you said no.
Correct.
You said you wanted to speak in a public forum.
Correct.
So we couldn't send anything to you, because first and foremost, you wanted to make it into a public forum, so.
May I speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
I did not want a decision on the request. I wanted to merely know the status of the investigation.
Okay. Commissioner Warnock?
Okay. So, you know, we, we basically, we're, first of all, in the previous town meeting, I didn't actually ask if, I can't remember the exact wording, but, I mean, I, we went back and watched, and I asked you whether you wanted to be in or out. I didn't ask if you wanted, like, I didn't say we were de-anexing you. We were just trying to get a feel of what, where you wanted, you know, where your mind was on this.
I watched the video a couple of times also, and I got the definite impression you were asking me if I wanted to be de-annexed or on annexed, and I said yes.
Yeah, it was something to that effect, but it wasn't, we didn't say we were going to de-annex you, right? We were trying to get an idea of what you wanted. So, but, anyway, so we had, you know, the town attorney do some research into what are the legal aspects of this. And so, first of all, the, despite the popular belief there, there is no de-annexation procedures, it turns out. The common misconception of this matter is that because there is a procedure which outlines in state law for municipal government to annex land into its corporate boundaries, the same type of procedure must apply to reserve the process. This is not the case. When I, I'll continue to use the term "de-anex," realizing it's a shortcut to label the subject and not actually reference to a such procedure. So there's no statutory procedure or language which addresses the situation where a property which lies within corporate limits of municipal government can be removed from municipal borders of the town. However, the state has recognized a procedure which can be used to accomplish this task, and that is a procedure to amend the corporate charter of the town. A charter amendment can be instituted in two ways. The first is by legislative action by the Board of Commissioners, and the second by a petition of 20% of the registered voters of the town. Both actions have strict procedural guidelines and are subject to referendum by the voters. Further, the property to be de-annexed must be, must abut or be adjacent to the corporate boundary, and the action must not result in the creation of an unincorporated enclave within the municipal borders or boundaries. With that said, the use is extremely rare. Policies, the reason there's no procedure in state law for de-annexation, is the reason such a rarity, this action is counter to the principles of municipal government and growth management of state. Basically, the state wants everything in growth corridors, so they're interested in preserving municipal boundaries. So then also, the state has priority funding areas, so they, creating municipalities creates priority funding areas and such. I guess, in summary, the, the procedure itself is, is pretty extensive, because it would require a charter change, and I believe it requires a, I could be wrong, but I think it was, it would require a survey, or something to that effect, of the town boundaries.
I mean, answer that? Yeah. Yeah, the, the how-tos is, the charter amendment would have all the verbiage of a charter amendment, but it would have to have an exhibit to show exactly what piece of property is coming out, and you just can't say, "This property," or use an address. You'd actually have to have the survey description of what that is and how it matches to the town boundary, and that's the first technical thing that would need to happen. And after that, then you would pass a charter resolution if the elected body decided that's how they wanted to do this. If the elected body decided they didn't want to de-annex a piece of property, any piece of property, you'd still have to have the survey, but then 20% of the registered voters of the town could petition to have a piece of property de-annexed, and that's, that's how that would happen.
But it would still have to go through referendum of the voters.
If, if, either way, the voters would then, if they decided, if they did the petition, it would go to referendum, or if you all passed it and they didn't do a petition, then it would just take effect. There's advertising requirements and all those administrative things, but you, you can't do it without having a description, so you, you have to have a description.
So I guess the long and short of it is, is the procedure would be relatively costly, in a sense. You would have probably surveying that would need to be done. You're looking at advertisements and things like that in paper, which, you know, we would, the town, I mean, we don't feel it's fair to put that burden on the taxpayers to, so we would be looking for you to pay for all of those things if that were to happen.
Well, the folks in the officials at the state of Maryland I've spoken to don't feel that way, so thank you for your time. I'll be back.
Thank you, Mr. Cather. Mr. Fisher?
I've been told that people don't understand me, so if you don't understand me, just let me know. But I, I place the paper beside each of your desks with highlighted at certain places, and I want to ask each one of you whether you agree that that is accurate information. So, Mr. LaShiere?
So you're asking me if the highlighted portions of this piece, these two pieces of paper are accurate?
Is that the latest information's available?
I'm just trying to read the whole thing in its entirety, so there's context.
Well, you made a big decision, so you should know whether you, you use that in your decision or not.
Mr. Fisher, with all due respect, you show up tonight with this, I mean, it's only fair that we should be able to read it to actually know what we're agreeing to.
Well, okay.
Mr. Fisher, can I ask, this document itself says Cecil News?
I can't understand.
This says Cecil News, sir. Did this come from a news article that you copied and pasted? I'm just trying to understand the context of the document itself, because traditionally...
That's, that's, that's an exact copy of the article.
Yeah, because it seems a little disjointed.
Well, I mean, the only thing that I would say is, we don't really have, basically at the top, it's handwritten, it says Cecil News, it, it doesn't show anything besides a typical...
Well, you can check it with Cecil News, whether that came from Cecil News. That's easy to check.
Besides this document, sir, did you have anything else that you wanted to come before the board? I realize that we spent some time reading that document.
Well, I, I want an answer from each one of you. Do you agree?
I, I wouldn't say that we would give you an answer tonight, sir, based upon the fact that this document was just presented, and it also is handwritten at the top. I'm not sure if this document was just put together by yourself, or, I know you say that you copied it, but I can't really tell one way or the other. I'm not sure what the board feels about it, but.
Um, yeah.
So, is, is there any more business?
Okay.
Besides the document?
Well, you'll find your answer in, in the Herald next week, and all the information to refute what's in that is in these two pieces of paper, which you both, you all have, so.
So, you're saying that there's a...
Take into consideration that, you know, you're making decisions on incorrect information.
Mr. Fisher, I will say that we have studied this and studied this. I know your personal feelings about wells, sir. I served on the same board that you did. While I respect your opinion, I respectfully disagree. We are trying really hard to move forward with a water source that'll be cost-effective to residents as well as bring in development that has been waiting for a long period of time.
If you call eleven million, five hundred, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars more effective than zero, I, you, you went to a different school than I did.
Mr. Fisher, in all due respect...
It's not about the math, Bob. It, it's the fact, it's, the, the studies show that it's not, I mean, we're not going to debate this over and over.
Are you, are you indicating...
Well, these are studies. These are not...
Mr. Fisher, first of all, you're saying that wells will cost zero dollars to put in. Zero dollars to put in wells.
No, I didn't say the wells cost zero dollars.
I mean, as you just said, I don't understand how you, how you come up with math where you are suggesting that you can increase the water supply for zero dollars.
This is self-defense. It's, it's, it'll be explained.
Look, you just said it. Eleven million versus zero dollars. I, I don't understand.
Thank you for your attention, or inattention, or whatever it was.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
All right. Next on the agenda is Celeste.
I am Celeste Milliner, and I apologize for my lack of formality in, in voicing my concerns. I have concerns specific to two thousand sixteen, oh four, and oh five that are proposed regarding rental properties. So, first and foremost, I feel that these proposals are a definite infringement upon our rights as homeowners. I'd like to know how you can possibly dictate who is going to do repairs and work on my home. I'd like to know why you think that you need access to who is living in a home that I own, and why it must be necessary to have rapid act, rapid entry keypads, just to name a few things.
If, if you're looking for a question and answer, the only thing that I would say is, this is citizens' comment, so you put a comment forward. If you do want to get feedback from the board, we can definitely send you an email or get back to you a certain way like that. Typically, it's not a question and answer format, it's just a citizen's comment. You put it forward, and that's what I can say, so.
That's great. I appreciate your attention. I, I do find a lot of fault in this, and I am not in agreement with this. I have met with an attorney, and we'll be in touch.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Jackson?
Jeff Jackson, one nineteen Cooper Avenue. Recently, Rising Sun was ranked one of the, well, was actually ranked the thirteenth safest place to live in Maryland. I think this speaks to the quality of the residents of Rising Sun and to the work that the Rising Sun Police Department has done. However, this is in direct conflict with the statements made by a local businessman during the August twenty-third, two thousand sixteen town meeting. If you watch the video of the meeting on YouTube, you would get the impression that the whole town of Rising Sun is full of poorly maintained properties and low-quality citizens. How can Rising Sun be the thirteenth safest place to live in Maryland but be full of low-quality citizens? Rising Sun is full of well-maintained property and high-quality citizens. I found it somewhat unsettling that the town had no comment to contradict these statements other than to say that this businessman would be ideal to serve on an appeals board in Rising Sun. I'm not saying the town does not have some problem, properties, but I think you'll find that most residents of Rising Sun are law-abiding citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. And, excuse me for the misprint on the last name, but we do have a Jeff that doesn't want to speak.
Jeff, it's Garrus, two oh five Maple Leaf Drive. Just two things to say. First thing, as I'm with my fellow assistant over here, oh four, oh five, I think, the housing bills, inspections for resale, this is, to me, is an overstep of government. I'm a limited government type of guy. I've read the bills, I under, what the bill says is going to accomplish, I don't think it's going to accomplish. You can't dictate to people how they're going to keep their properties. If their property falls into disrepair, it's because either that's the type of person they are, or they came off financial hard times, and they're not going to be able to make the repairs that you're requiring them to make to sell the property. It just seems kind of productive of that, in that way. The other way is, most of you, some of you here know what I do. So, when I'm telling you that you're infringing all my rights, you're infringing all my rights. It's an overstep of government, all right? I'm a limited government type of guy. I believe that most of the town board here, who I speak to, some on a daily basis, are limited government people. And I ask that you go back to your thought processes, what you had before you were a commissioner, and revisit that before you vote on this measure. The other thing I'd like to make a request is for the board, this whole water thing. I've read, some have read this too. I understand the complexity of it, where we're going with it. With the lifting of the moratorium, it, it may be in there, it's a lot to read, I may have overlooked it, I don't know, but I would like to see some kind of verbiage in there if it can be done, so that when we, new building or developments come in, or whatever comes, and we have a citizen, increase in citizen, or increase of money coming in, that my rate can be reduced accordingly to have an equal share of the load, as opposed to maintain, you know, if you get eight thousand, if you get eight thousand new dollars coming in, right, I should have to pay the same amount of money, because now that eight thousand dollars can be spread out amongst the other nine hundred homes. If that verbiage is in there, I missed it, but it'd be something I would just put out there for you guys to consider and think. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Chief?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I'm going to be brief with my report. During a period of August twenty-third through September thirteenth, we've had three hundred and eighty-eight calls for service, five of which were CDS arrests for heroin, one theft, one assault, two fugitives from other areas. As you can see, the traffic warnings have increased. For significant events... My time is done.
Your time's up? No, I'm just kidding. Go ahead.
For significant events. On Saturday the tenth, we had a gentleman go to A+ to play some lottery. He left his car unattended and running in the parking lot, and the opportunist thief jumped in and drove off. Under Maryland law, you cannot leave your vehicle running and unattended. He subsequently can be fined for doing that. Okay. Can you hear me now? He subsequently can be fined for doing that. And that, to me, makes him a victim twice, well, not a victim twice. He's a victim of his own doing by leaving his keys in his car, but then he also gets a fine from the state for doing it and causing us to write reports. The vehicle was subsequently located the next day when the suspect, not the next day, but a few days later, when the suspect, who had been identified and charged, showed up with his kitty cat to tell us where the car was. We subsequently got the car and returned it to him. Yes, he did carry a cat into the police station to tell us where the car was. Strange things happen. As you all know, school has started under the next significant event, and I have received numerous complaints of people passing school buses. Remember, these are the little ones we're talking about. The safety of the kids in our community, when they are getting on and off a school bus, you must stop. What you see on the screens here basically gives you an illustration of when you should stop. If it's not a divided highway with a barrier, you should be stopping. If there's a barrier there, yes, you have the right to proceed cautiously, but remember, these are the, our little ones, our kids, the future of our country, that is getting on a school bus and off the school bus. In our special enforcement areas, we spent sixteen hours along Main Street. We stopped twenty-four vehicles for speeding and, and moving violations. Along South Queen Spee, I'm sorry, along South Queen Street, we spent eight point five hours monitoring traffic. We stopped seven vehicles and made one arrest. In Valley View, we spent ten hours of foot patrol and made two vehicle stops there. We spent fourteen hours of patrol at the middle school. We made six vehicle stops there. And last but not least, Cecil County Shop with a Cop is hosting a golf tournament on September sixteenth at Furnish Bay Country Club, or Golf Course. If you are interested, you can find them on Facebook or online. I think they may be able to still enter foursomes into it because it's this Friday, but it's a, a, a great organization that does the great things for the young people of this county. With that being said, that's my report. Is there any questions from the board?
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
All right. Town Administrator, I did have a question. I do see some street issues. Are you going to cover that in your report this evening? Okay. You do have a report this evening?
Yes.
Floor is yours, sir.
All right. The two items I have tonight are related to the proposal that you got, I guess maybe in the beginning of August, regarding some restoration on Valley View, in the Valley View development, due to the water main break that we incurred in early spring. The second item is the repairs to Ryan Drive. You originally authorized going out the bid for those services. I believe the original estimated cost from KCI, the engineer, engineering firm, was for roughly forty-nine thousand dollars. We received three bids, actually, I'm looking here, the engineer's estimate was forty-three thousand, three fifty. We got three bids, one from Meadows Construction for forty-three thousand, five seventy-three twenty, another one from Dick Hollow Contracting Incorporated for seventy thousand, eight ten, and a third one from Richards Paving Incorporated for seventy-three thousand, nine twenty. You have in your packet the engineer's review that based upon the contractor's experience on projects of similar scope and size, and review of the bid tabulation, we recommend Meadows Construction Incorporated be awarded this contract for the bid amount of forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and twenty cents.
Could I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you.
All right. The other item, if you remember at that meeting, we talked about some stormwater drainage issues in Mason Run, and we were contemplating whether or not we were going to include that in the original bid that went out with the other two projects, but we were very concerned that we were going to have some inflated costs because we were sort of mixing a little bit of apples to oranges in terms of what we were looking to do. So, we decided to pull that out of the proposal, if you recall, it was not in the proposal, and we, we just went to basically our emergency contractor that we use, James Meadows Contracting, who, as you know, is the one who does all the emergency repairs for our water lines, and his estimated cost was four thousand, fifty dollars for, for that, for that project.
Could I get a motion to approve that project?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion regarding this project? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
The last item I have for you guys, which sort of segues off of this Mason Run issue, is there's a thing called the MS four permit, which basically is regulations that come down from the EPA to the state, and then to agencies that are responsible for stormwater management in a given jurisdiction area. In the past, communities like the town of Rising Sun really didn't have a whole lot of responsibility associated with that. And Commissioner Warnock, you can relate to this, because if you recall, one of the ways we were able to get the county to go partnerships with us at Veterans Park, and also how we were able to get some assistance down at the dog park, is that the efforts that were made to reduce the bad things that go into stormwater, and that's what all these, these regulations are about, is saving the bay. Though, any entity that had an MS four permit or had the responsibility for MS four compliance had a certain time period to, to basically put their hands on all of the infrastructure in their jurisdiction over a period of time, and do something to it to make it more efficient at what it's supposed to be doing. So, since we didn't have any MS four requirements, we were able to go to the county and say, "We will sign off and allow you to get the credit if you help us in what we are trying to do." Well, the, basically what this comes down to is, when those procedures were put in place a couple of years ago, there was a time period placed in which it was, the regulations were going to slowly trickle down from the bigger entities down to the smaller entities, and it's now our time in the sun, so to speak. And now we are going to have some MS four compliance responsibilities related to training, public education, and be more directly responsible for stormwater issues. Unfortunately, you can't... Unfortunately, you can sort of say that this is an unfunded mandate to some degree. You know, we're a community of 2,800 people, and who knows where this is going to end up going, you know, in the future, and what our level of responsibility is. So we are working with KCI engineers who have some familiarity in dealing with this in the town of Elkton, for instance, because the town of Elkton was large enough a couple of years ago for them to say that they didn't want to rely on the county for the MS4 requirements, they would do it in-house. So KCI is a good resource on what those implications could be for the town of Rising Sun. So I'll report back to you in the future as to what that means.
Thank you, Town Administrator.
To that point, Calvin, I mean, I think that, on that note, the agreement actually still stands. I mean, we can't still get those whip credits, because we already signed those off to the county. But that said, I think there's some other add-on type projects as part of that, that we might be able to do in-house that could have significant savings. There's the failing stormwater management pond over at the Public Works Building. So there may be some things that we have that wouldn't be particularly, you know, we could probably do them in-house at absolute minimal expense that would allow us to, to meet some of those requirements.
Well, I guess the thing that I'm raising, that I'm, you know, I'm always warning everybody is, here we are, you know, the second week in September, we, we balanced a budget with a very small surplus to begin with, and we're not even through the first quarter of the year, and we have some rather large expenditures that have to fit somewhere. So here's another, you know, this, I don't know if it's going to affect us in this budget cycle, but in next year's budget cycle, there's probably some money we're going to have to set aside for compliance.
Thank you. No Historical Preservation Commission or Arts Alliance presentation tonight. Does anyone have any old business? Does anyone have any new business? I do have a set of new business, and that is a donation to Shop With The Cop this year. As you all know, I can't put a motion forward. As mayor, I don't have a vote. So what I'm asking for is, I initially asked for a thousand dollar donation to Shop With The Cop to help them again this year. So many kids throughout our county, including in Rising Sun, are in need and are benefited by Shop With The Cop. It's an amazing organization. I think the chief would say that it has a large impact on our police officers, and I would like to start a discussion, if I can, to move forward with the donation for them.
I'll move to start that discussion.
I initially came forward with a thousand dollar donation. Obviously, other towns are putting forward different amounts, so whatever the board's pleasure is, we can start a discussion about it.
I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion. I'm on committees for Shop With The Cop, so I'm going to let you guys handle it.
Calvin, I can't get to, unfortunately, the network's down. I can't get to the budget right now. Didn't we, did we budget money for Shop With The Cop?
I believe at the $500 rate that we did last year.
That's what I thought. My suggestion is, given that we, you know, we have a certain amount budgeted, that's, you know, it's already in the budget, and stick with that. But, I mean, I'm willing to put in additional money. One of the things I suggested was each of the elected body put in, you know, like extra $20 or something, that would round it up to 600, and then we're selling the shirts to benefit Shop With The Cop. So I would anticipate that we would probably be over 1,000 between those three sources anyway.
Absolutely. I like that idea. Commissioner LaCher?
Oh, I'm definitely going to throw some money in, put some skin in the game.
Sounds good. Me as well. Can I get a motion to approve a $500 donation?
I don't think you, you don't actually need it with...
We don't need it with the budget.
It's in the budget. So you don't...
Do we need a motion?
No. It's already in the budget.
Okay. So we'll move forward with that donation. Thank you, gentlemen. I did want to move forward into the mayor's report. One important thing I did want to announce is our Spooktacular is again back this year. This is our third year doing it. This has grown so, so large. We started, I started this event with about 400 people coming out. It's a free event for kids. And then last year, we had close to 2,000 that came out. So again, it'll be in the municipal lot on October the 22nd, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. We're going to have hayrides for the kids, we're going to do pumpkin painting or designing, we're going to have multiple inflatables and moon bounces for the kids, and it's just going to be a great time. I'm also going to have a small space for vendors to come out, and the money from the vendors will go directly into the event to get more exciting things for the kids to enjoy. I did also want to say, as you may have seen, all our lights are green going through our Main Street area, and that is in memorial of Ben Larson and to bring awareness to donate life. 20,000 people alone are sitting on the organ donor list right now in the state of Maryland. 18 people die a day from a lack of getting an organ. I was blessed to be able to meet, and you can read it in the Rising Sun Herald this week, Aaron Rozell, who was a recipient of an organ donor, and he was able to make a full recovery. He is continuing with recovering from a kidney donation or a liver donation. I think it was a liver, a liver donation. And it was just amazing to spend some time with him and talk with him about organ donation. And next year, we want to try to plan an event in September. But if you're not a donor, I would ask you to please reconsider. There's more information downstairs on the main table in the entryway of Town Hall. If you have an iPhone, you can even sign up with that simply by going to their app on iPhone. I just think it's so important, you know, Ben was 17 years old, and he was tragically killed by a motorist, when a motorist pulled out in front of his motorcycle. But he alone saved multiple lives from his organ and tissue donations. So it's just a great organization to support. I wear this green band in his memory. I've asked our elected body to wear lapel pins at our next town meeting in memorial, and to also bring awareness to organ donation. Couple more things I did want to say. As you know, Color Fun Run is getting ready to come in the next couple of weeks. It's Saturday, September the 24th. We're expecting a significant amount of people coming out, close to 3,000. You will see our police department go forward to business owners just to bring them awareness, and to also bring them a letter of that day, just to let them know about traffic issues and those types of things. I definitely, definitely encourage everyone to join the NICSOL program, and to get text alerts from our town regarding traffic and other issues that may come through, as well as, if you're on Facebook, we post it on Facebook as well. I was lucky enough to attend the investiture of Will Davis as our new judge in Cecil County. Will is a great friend of mine, and I want to thank Commissioner Warnock and Chief Peterson for also attending. It was a historical event, not only for the fact that he is African-American, but also the fact that he is the youngest judge to be appointed, so I wish him well. The other thing I wanted to bring awareness to is, I'm getting ready to have a meeting again with our new principal at Rising Sun High School, and to see how I can get involved there, as well as Rising Sun Middle School. I typically do that every year, to see how I can get involved with the kids and what type of events that they would like me to attend. I wanted to give a big shout-out to the Rising Sun volleyball team. Last night, they won against Delaware Military Academy, which was a huge game for them. Last time, they went against DMA, they actually lost. So this was a great home win for them. Congratulations to them, and obviously, go Tigers. The other thing I wanted to say was, school supply drive for Rising Sun has benefited 659 kids from Rising Sun Elementary School to Rising Sun High School, from Conawago to Cecilton. A big shout-out to the Herald for all they do to bring school supplies to kids, as well as cash donations to those schools. So thank you. The last thing on my agenda is Plumpton Park Sewers is holding this Girl for Jimmy. They are trying to gain funds to get a girl giraffe for Jimmy the Giraffe. It is $40 a person, $70 a couple. And unfortunately, I have no idea why I decided to do this, but I will be auctioned off along with Officer Dallas Herbert and Rob Jugler, just to gain funds for Jimmy the Giraffe. So if you want to bid 25 cents, or maybe a quarter or something, that's probably what I'm worth right now to the residents. But come out, it's definitely a great event. A dollar would be excellent. That's probably what I'm worth right now. But moving forward into Commissioner comments, Commissioner LaCher?
Thank you, Mayor Marion. I think we're going to start putting you on three minutes.
Nice, please. That would be great.
This was, this was, just two things real quick. This was posted on Facebook soon after the last meeting, but I'll talk about it. It was a $12,500 grant we've got from the Maryland Department of Environment to help offset operational costs at the sewer plant. Since the sewer plant's technically during this time was in a partial year operation, we weren't eligible for the full grant. Next year, we will be eligible for the $30,000 grant, so that's 12,500. That'll help offset our costs we'll be getting from them. The other thing, a lot of talk's been about Southern States and with the new water line coming in. We do have a almost completely approved ESCO agreement with Southern States to go ahead and begin the study, the feasibility, the background, all the approvals and the related issues, the supply water out to the, there's 14 houses out on Wilson Road. It's a $24,000 project that Southern States actually is paying the town to go ahead and complete. Now, this completes, this goes back on to Nate, Nate's out. I know you as Nate, I don't know you as anything else. You know, a project like new houses, the, I mean, absolutely, like any of the impact fees and whatnot, they have come back in to help offset the costs, so we can reduce those rates on a project like this, even just 14 homes. I mean, you're looking at over 100 grand in impact fees that we can be able to take and put back into the system to help try and figure out how we can get these rates lowered. And also, you're bringing in 14 more houses, you know, onto the grid. I think every 20 houses or so is like $23,000 a year in revenue. I think that's the exact number. Am I correct, Joe?
Looking it up. Yes, you're correct, sir.
Yeah, so every, so this is, you know, 14 houses is really close to 20, to add on $23,000 more thousand, and plus, this is, you know, technically out-of-town water rates, so it's even higher than, you know, the normal rates. So it's like, this is like a big step to help offset the costs. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And I mean, I would add to that is, we're going to do everything we can to look into things like that, because we're also residents, and everything that is passed here, we are affected by. Everything that we do here, we have to shoulder the burden, as well as our residents do. Commissioner Warnock? Commissioner Shepherd, sorry about that.
Do we need to do something with the Southern States thing tonight? Positive.
I think we can. I think.
Okay.
Southern States has made other arrangements.
Okay, thank, thank you, Mr. Fisher.
All right. Could I get a motion to approve the town of Rising Sun ESCO agreement, please?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, Commissioner LaCher. Commissioner Shepherd?
Yep, I just, let me get this microphone tied. Good? Okay. I just wanted to talk tonight about a new program that we're doing called Back the Blue. We're starting with these T-shirts. Let me get Jane a good picture here.
Stand up, Travis. Stand up.
Yeah, Travis has got it. We all have the shirts on. There's the backs. Basically, what we're doing with these is, these are $20, they're for sale downstairs during business hours, Town Hall. The net proceeds are being split in half. Half of it is going to our law enforcement appreciation breakfast in January, and the other half is being donated to Shop With The Cop Cecil County. So both are worthy causes. I want to see as many of these around town as possible. I wear mine all the time, to the point where I go to like stern stuff and people question me. I've met so many people from Rising Sun and Calora, just because I had the shirt on. So it's really neat to kind of wear it around, starts conversation. But like I said, $20 downstairs and goes to worthy causes, so appreciate if everybody would buy one.
Thank you. Commissioner Warnock?
Yep. Well, on that, I've managed to completely forget what, there was a... Oh, I'll be out for the next town meeting. I will be out of town on business. And, oh, I remember what it was now. I had my phone out for a reason here. There was a, I received an email regarding a tree down in Veterans Park. There was actually, we had some storm damage over the last, I want to say about year and a half or so, we've had probably three trees, I think, downed in Veterans Park. One of those trees was actually a memorial tree that was dedicated to somebody. And that tree, it had fallen during a storm, and of course, once the tree falls, we, you know, tend to cut them off level to the ground. So there was, I'd received an email, and I apologize to Ms. O'Connell. She had emailed back in August, and I, it just slipped my, it slipped through the cracks, and I didn't get a chance to reply to it, but she had emailed me again today, and I'll be reaching out to her shortly sometime this week. There was a young man by the name of Christopher "Bo" Barton Lewis, who was, I believe, was killed by a drunk driver, if I remember correctly from the plaque. It doesn't actually say. He, he, when he signed up, and it goes into what Mayor Marion was talking about, when he signed up to get his driver's license, he signed up to be an organ donor. In his case, unfortunately, he died on the way to Christiana Hospital, and they were unable to use his organs. But the tree that was in his honor did fall down, and we're, I was interested in reaching out to the family, I didn't know how to, and I wasn't quite sure how to go about making that contact, but fortunately, somebody has reached out to us to replace that tree, so we'll be looking to replace that tree here sometime near future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The last thing I did want to say was, a big shout-out to Commissioner LaCher for taking us all on a tour of the Aquaral Water Plant and Treatment Facility. It was definitely an eye-opening experience to see what water goes through when you turn on that tap. So it was definitely a great facility. They have numerous awards there. It was actually great to see it with my own eyes and be able to see the process itself, but a big thank you to you. Any more business to come for the board this evening? Hearing none? Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Thank you, gentlemen.